Hello, my name is Gary Christmas and I am the president of the Rain Cross Group, a Riverside organization founded more than two decades ago to advocate for effective and accountable civic leadership in a strong vibrant city economy. For the June 2015 municipal elections with the help of our partners Charter Communications and the Press Enterprise, the Rain Cross Group is hosting a series of discussions for the candidates in Riverside City Council wards one, three, five, and seven. These discussions will be aired on Charter Channel 188 and available online through links from the Press Enterprise, the Rain Cross Group website, and Charter Communications. Our intent is to provide essential information to help the residents of our city make an informed decision regarding these city council elections. The Rain Cross Group is sponsoring these discussions because our individual city council members make decisions that affect everyone in our city. And we believe it is important that our city government should be led by council members who act with civility, prudence, integrity, and vision. Together with our partners at Charter Communications and the Press Enterprise, the Rain Cross Group is providing this forum to help elevate the civic dialogue and provide insight into the views and positions of city council candidates that otherwise might not be readily accessible. We appreciate the opportunity to make this information available. This discussion focuses on Ward one or seven. For those of you who may not be familiar with the boundaries or features of this ward, we prepared a short introduction. Thank you.
Welcome, on behalf of Charter Communications, the Press Enterprise, and the Rain Cross Group, we welcome you to the 2015 Riverside City Council Debates. My name is Brad Pomerantz and I will be moderating the discussion today regarding City Council wards three and five. These two are not opposing each other. They are both incumbent council members that are running unopposed. We have Mike Subaru representing Ward three, we have Chris MacArthur representing Ward five, and that will be the first question. I'll start with you, Chris. What do you make of the fact that of the four city council races, there are three seats where incumbents are running, and yet the two of you are running unopposed?
Well, I think that you need to, the candidates have to stand on their own. I think in Mike's case and myself, I'll speak for myself, and Mike certainly can speak for himself. I think we've done a very good job of communicating with our constituents, returning their phone calls, returning their emails. That is probably the most important thing that you can do. But also, we do a lot of outreach. In our ward, we have a constituent barbecue every year where we have over 500 of our constituents come to our barbecue. They look forward to that. We send out a Thanksgiving card every year to over 3,700 of our constituents. So I think it's the fact that when they call, they know that they're going to get a response. If they have an issue, they know we're going to take care of it.
I want to follow up, but first I want Mike to give us a response.
You know, I think a lot has happened in the last year with the city council in general as far as, you know, we've got a new city manager arriving shortly and new city attorney has been seated. So I think there's been a lot of changes that people have seen, and I would think from the feedback I'm hearing and from what some of the different comments have been, is that people are actually happy with the progress. I think that they're looking at things that they see that are turning a corner, and I think it's just kind of a, let's keep on going with what we have and move on from there. I think they're seeing positive changes and I think they want the changes to continue.
But at the same time, sir, you know, you have four wards that are up. In one ward, no incumbent, only two candidates running.
Yeah.
Is the farm team getting small? Are people turning off to politics in general? You know, it's like, this is Riverside, this is an active community.
Yes.
You know, city council members count. It's not as if it's one of those, you know, two meetings a month and that's all.
Exactly.
So keep going if you can.
Well, I, you know, look at my particular ward, it was basically an 18-month run because I was filling in for the back end of the term that was vacated by Rusty Bailey when he became mayor. He had been the Ward three council member. So really, for me, it's, you know, been a very, very short time. So possibly the voters might be looking at, well, we just put him in office, you know, 18 months later, I mean, you know, he's just getting started. You know, when you look at the campaign right before the one that I was in where I was elected into Ward three, there was five candidates that ran in that race. And then in Ward six, that was an open seat after Nancy Hart left, Jim Perry was elected, there were six. So there was quite a big field. So, you know, I think you'd probably have to look at the long haul on this. What would the next cycle be? And if you see just one candidate or two or unopposed, you know, maybe there's a trend. Or again, maybe it's because there's been such significant changes on the council that people are like, well, okay, you know, this is a positive direction. Let's see where this goes and keep it moving.
Chris?
Yeah, and again, it's the ongoing dialogue. I think in my case, of course, I've had the opportunity now to serve for almost eight years, but I think, I think my constituents know me. They know me because we've worked through several issues over time. And so I think what happens, you start building a track record, and when people say, well, what do you think about Chris? Do you think he should be, should I think about running? I think people would say, well, you can run, but I think you're going to find that he's going to be very responsive to his constituents. And I think when it comes to campaigns, both Mike and I know that when you get ready to run, you better figure on running and knocking on doors because that's what both Mike and I did. And that's how you, that's how you really meet your constituents for the first time, and that's where you start building the credibility.
At the same time, you both have told me, every one of your colleagues past and present have told me, that serving on the Riverside City Council is a full-time job.
Oh, absolutely. That opens up another dynamic of talk.
Yes, a full-time job, and we'll go there. Yet, your compensation arguably is not a full-time jobs compensation, $40,000 a year. I mean, look, people live on that, fine, but as a general proposition, it's not easy to live on $40,000 a year. And so some, I mean, you happen to be retired, you're fortunate to be blessed with a pension. I'm not sure.
I'm, I've been privately employed or in my own business all my life, and I have no problem with the way it's currently set up.
Yeah, so let me ask the question, just to be clear to our viewers. So would you support moving the Riverside City Council position to full-time status with commensurate pay?
So I would be against it. I think we would not attract the highest quality of individuals that want to serve their community. What we do is we end up hiring full-time politicians. I think what we need are community servants that want to come to the council, get something done, and then hopefully know when it's time to exit the stage, when that time comes. But we need folks that are business people, teachers, whatever it may be, but we need individuals that want to come and serve.
But for example, I mean, if you're a teacher, I mean, let's take, if I may, the current mayor Rusty Bailey. You know, he was a teacher, and it was a challenge for him. I mean, he had a full-time job and two young children, you know, a family to feed, a family to enjoy, soccer games to attend, I've seen him on the soccer field.
Absolutely.
And so the question becomes, you know, how do you get that teacher to run if it is a full-time job, as you say, yet they have another full-time job which is teaching the best and the brightest of Riverside, sir?
Well, you know, there's, I guess, some different viewpoints that can be argued either way that I can, I can put out, and this is probably where Chris and I differ on this regard, is I committed to serving my first term without pay, and I've done so, and I have not accepted not one penny in the salary, but I get the dynamic.
But you're lucky in that you have a pension, and I'm not going to take that away from you. There are plenty of people that bash those that have pensions. That is not me. You worked hard, you are a cop, you have a pension, but not everyone has a pension.
Exactly.
You don't have a pension, you know?
In serving, you know, like what I told people from the diocese, I didn't have skin in the game since I was serving for free on that first term. And my point of view is that it is a full-time job, but I don't want to label it full-time, part-time, or in-between time. I just want to call it city council. I'd really like to see the word "part-time" taken away, but not saying that it's a full-time job. It's serving on the council. And I think that, you know, the pay should go up to some degree. I don't know to what. I think that's open for debate.
It did go up recently.
It did, but see, our charter says it can only go up, you know, 5%, I believe, you know, when they vote on it, and you would need a charter amendment to stricken the word "part-time." It's really a misnomer because I think that people oftentimes will label, well, they're just part-timers. Well, what does that really mean? I mean, first off, we're not part-timers, I can tell you that. Every council member I served with, they're serving full-time and then some. But I think maybe it does a disservice to the council because it makes them less relevant to the overall picture of what's going on in the city, that there's a disengagement, well, they're only serving, you know, part-time. And that's not what's going on, and it's a very large community, 317-plus thousand people, and there's a lot of complex issues. We have our own utility. There's a lot to have oversight, legislative oversight, and policy vision-making that, you know, come to that. So there's a lot of factors.
I know you're not opponents, but you seem to be opposed a little bit on this issue. So how would you respond?
Well, and as far, as far as the salary is concerned, and I'm not trying to make a big deal out of this, but I actually voted against it. I voted, I was the only one that voted against the pay increase. My feeling is, if you want to be a council member, you need to come and serve, serve the community. If you're concerned about pay or how much time it's going to take, this position is not for you. And that's how I would argue it. Whether it takes 10 hours, 12 hours, 15 hours, we're on-call 24/7. And whatever it takes to get the job done, that's what we're going to do.
We are sitting here today in large part thanks to the Rain Cross Group, which you know is a leadership-driven organization. So I would like to ask you, and we'll start with Mike, how do you define leadership? And what does a successful leader on a city council look like to you?
Very good. I like that. You know, to me, leadership has always been being able to motivate people to do things that they wouldn't normally do on their own. And that, building from there would be, you know, building consensus, identifying a path of travel that we could all go, and that's on the smaller scale. Basically getting the group to move in one common direction for the good of, good of all. And with that, on the council, I think clearly is building consensus with my peers, which we all do, and I think we're very good at consensus-building, and I've seen a very huge increase in the amount of dialogue that we have on the council, and I think that's very healthy. Most residents say that they really like to dialogue, they like to see things chewed on, and come to a conclusion, whether it's a 7-0 vote or whether it's a split vote, they like to see dialogue and they like to have the information aired. Well, that leadership role is a part of that, and it's basically sticking your neck out and motivating others and talking about topics that are not necessarily the easy topics to talk about, and getting to those, you know, hardcore items and dissecting them and, you know, bringing it before the public. And, you know, it's a position where you've got to stand tall, walk tall, and you've got to, you know, we have heard others say, you know, walk the, walk the talk and, you know, make it happen. And be receptive to the people and be able to take their criticism and be able to be that chief cook and bottle washer for them.
Yeah, I will use some advice that my mother gave me a long time ago, and it is, you have two ears and one mouth. Be a good listener. And I think in leadership, by listening to your constituents or business groups, which I have done in my ward, the Arlington Business Partnership would be one that would come to mind. What we were able to do is build a consensus, and we're seeing, for example, in Arlington, it moved forward. Same thing with our Grow Riverside effort, listening to our growers in the Green Belt. That's another effort. And so my job is the conduit. I'm the conduit between my constituents, between the business community, and bringing all their ideas together. And then once we've got them formulated an idea, my job is to push the, push the end product over the goal line. And that's, that I think is leadership, leadership by example, but also leadership by consensus.
I want to talk about the current council and its configuration. I think it's fair to say Riverside has been known in the past for very strong relations amongst council members. Lots of friendships, sure, there may be debates, but lots of respect. I think it's also fair to say that last year was probably not an example of that type of collegiality that we've seen in the past. So I'd like to start with you, Chris, and ask, do you believe that the, I'll just call it bickering, was the result of a lack of leadership? Or what was the cause of this kind of, and I don't want to make too much of it, but the breakdown a bit?
No, I think that the council members communicate well with each other. I think that we have always tried to handle ourselves in a professional manner. One of the things that Mike and I always talk about, we may not get along on every single issue, but he and I walk away at the end of the day, which unfortunately, we don't see this in Sacramento or Washington, but we walk away at the end of the day saying, all right, well, I lost that one, or I won that one, or we came to consensus on this one. We walk out as friends. And that's, that I think is a lack of communication, possibly between maybe some city staff and electeds. That might have caused part of the tension. My feeling is, it's the job of the electeds to get together with the staff members and work it out.
Do you, I'm sorry, sir, do you feel as if those days are behind us?
I think so, and I think Mike alluded to this earlier, the fact that we all came together to elect or to appoint a city attorney, and then also came together on our new city manager, that, I think, built a very good consensus among us, plus working on our strategic plan back in December, that brought us together, so we're, I think, on the same wavelength then.
Sir?
Yeah, I agree with Chris completely on that, and I would have to say that from the very first day that I showed up at the city council after being sworn in, I always joked about being sworn out. It's just fun to say that. But, you know, I didn't feel unwelcome, I felt very welcome. Each council member, I mean, even if there was something that I voted against or they voted against that I would have liked, I walked away and it's like, hey, you're going to be at whatever meeting tomorrow. Yeah, you know, see you there, and just, you know, a good, a good harmonious relationship. I never felt ever that there was any specific attacks by council members. I would have to attribute it, as Chris said, and really amp that up some, that it was, I think, a lack of, between the council members, the mayor, and the staff, everybody knowing where their place was and following the charter and following what the rules say that their role is. And I believe that, that once we kind of define those roles and we exercise the authority that has been granted to us by the people of Riverside, I think everything kind of fell into place.
I want to ask if it was hard for you specifically, because for better or for worse, some of the bickering was related to perceived actions or inactions on your behalf?
Yeah. Well, we saw in July 22nd of 14, how, I call it the deck of cards came down. I mean, the people that were putting things forward to put on the attack, you know, it's, you step into the political arena, you've got to be ready for that boxing match. And you talk about leadership, well, that's when you stand your ground, you do what you're supposed to do, and, you know, you speak from the heart and you explain yourself. And at the end of the day, on that particular, you know, day, we saw how it turned out, and I think that it's been forward progress on the positive side ever since then.
Riverside, despite a tremendous recession in this region, was able to move forward with so much development as part of the Renaissance project. I'm sure you're very proud of that.
Yes, sir.
Riverside is continuing to march forward and looking for ways to innovate. So one of the latest proposals is a proposed streetcar line. It's believed that if this proposal marches forward, it would be the costliest project in the city's history. That's not a negative or a positive, I'm just stating the facts. More than $500 million. As you've been out and about, what have your constituents been saying to you about this proposal? And along those lines, have you taken a position on it? And if you have, what and why? And we'll start with Mike.
Well, you know, I'm skeptical of what it will do for Riverside, but again, you know, being on the council, I can't be close-minded to it. I've got to look at the facts, and I've got to look at what this can do for Riverside. Will an investment of money bring the desired revenue and the connectivity and the benefit to the people? If not, then, you know, one needs to look at it that, well, this may have seemed like a good idea, but it may not work for us. So I'm not close-minded to the idea of a streetcar. I'd like to see us maybe get the buses similar to the articulating buses they have in San Bernardino that are all red, and place them on a line if we can get RTA to do so, and put them on a specific line that would be this proposed streetcar route, offer the rides up for a dollar apiece, or even do free for a while, see what happens, and see if people will ride those. And if they're not going to ride those, then maybe they're not going to ride the streetcar. Looking at the model that we follow or that we look to is the Portland model, and when you look at the cost overruns, Los Angeles City is looking at the Portland model, most of the United States has done so. By the time they were done, they were looking at pretty close to a billion dollars. And they started out, I think, telling their people that they were in the $350,000 to $500,000, $500 million, excuse me, million range. And, you know, we saw the cost overruns, and you just know that things are always going to cost more than what you, you know, try to sell it to the public. I mean, that's just the way it seems to go with anything. So when you look at that, I've done a breakdown of the cost per ride at like $2 a ride. I think at close to a million dollars of just paying that bond off without any replacement cars, any maintenance, anything else, I think it was something like 2,250 or 2,280 rides a day, or maybe it was an hour that had to be accomplished with 38 cars in the loop. I mean, it was just so mind-boggling, it's like, I don't know how we could do this. So it's that balancing act.
And what do you think about it? And also, if you may, what are your constituents saying to you, if anything?
Well, I think it's mixed, but I think, as Mike had said, I think we have to look, put all the facts on the table and find out where we stand. That's the reason we have a streetcar feasibility study, is to be able to look at it. But if we're looking at it strictly for ridership, I think we're missing the boat. I think if you were to take an example like Tucson, Arizona, where they had a, it was actually not even a streetcar, it was an old streetcar that a club ran between the University of Arizona and downtown Tucson. It was wildly successful, and it was like the Orange Empire Museum running the streetcar. And what they found is that it revitalized the area around the University of Arizona going to downtown. So I think if we have to look at all the benefits of it, we need to look at the economic development, the housing benefits, the buildings, the businesses that would be attracted by it, we have to look at all of that. But again, it comes down to dollars and cents. Can we afford it? That's what the feasibility study is going to tell us.
I'd like to ask, of what are you most proud over the last term? And what would you like to accomplish in your next term? Because there will be a next term, and the same question to you, and we'll start with, I guess, Chris.
Well, I think the one thing that I'm very proud about is our Grow Riverside effort. 35 years ago, over 35 years ago, the voters of Riverside decided with Proposition R in 1979 that they wanted to preserve their agricultural green belt. The challenge was, there was no plan going forward of how to achieve that. So what we saw is we saw more and more grows being taken out and more, I would say, noxious uses coming into the green belt. So now we've got to taken on this issue and said, what can we do about this issue? Last year, our goal was to have 250 people come to Grow Riverside. We had about almost 500. This year, our goal is 1,000. But now we're getting individuals engaged. We've got people that want to, want to come to the green belt or other parts of the city and look at fresh fruits and vegetables. This is not just Riverside, this is throughout the country. But now we're starting to see it in Riverside, and now we're going to, we're polishing this jewel in the middle of our city, but now we've got a plan going forward of how to accomplish that.
Sir?
Well, I think for me, it'd be livability issues. I mean, there's just so many things that I think we've accomplished in the last year that have been just phenomenal.
But what about you specifically? Like, what are you most proud? I know it's only been 18 months, so it's tricky, but if you can.
Well, I've got a long list, actually. One of them's the panhandling issue. I mean, that was just absolutely huge. Red light cameras went away, the ambulance issue with the interfacility transports, the, what do I want to say, the non-emergency ambulance portion. Just anything from like agenda items being submitted, you know, by the council, speaker cards, being able to speak at 7 o'clock, setting a time. I mean, there's just so many things that I think that's been accomplished that I've worked on and been a part of, that I'm really proud that our council has moved forward and done all these things. So there's, there's just a lot of items that you could check off in the livability portion box, or however you want to call that, that I think our residents will benefit greatly from.
We hear a lot of talk about the Renaissance and its success. I haven't heard, we haven't heard a lot of talk about seizing your destiny. And I'm wondering whether that strategic plan is behind us, will it be incorporated into the future? What's your sense, Mike?
I think seizing our destiny is the overarching quality of life and future for our city. I think that, that we planned our recent strategic plan around, I really do. I think it was a strategic plan that gave some legs, so to speak, to seizing our destiny. I really do think that that has been the outcropping, if you want to call it that. We came up with a great plan. I mean, number one was customer service internally, externally, you know, making sure that our employees are empowered to do what they can to serve the public. The second overarching item underneath that would have been economic development, and the remaining five items fit so closely in alignment with economic development and ultimately all plugging back into customer service or customer care. So I just see that as just a continuation of seizing our destiny, and we're looking at ways to seize it.
Talk to us about what you perceive to be seizing our destiny. What is the plan and then how?
Right, and I think, I think the two big issues when I first came here were, our parks were absolutely horrendous in Riverside. Now we have some of the best, if not in Southern California, all of the state, maybe even in the country. But what Mike is talking about, customer service, is critical. One of the reasons I think he and I may are fortunate that we do not have opponents is because of our customer service reaching out to our constituents. The other area that it, that Seizing Our Destiny really identified was the Arlington Village area. The Arlington Village area was an area that had been left behind for probably 40 years. Now we're starting to see economic development come back, but by identifying what can we do through seizing our destiny? What, how can we create opportunities for our children? How can we create more economic opportunities? Now we're starting to see that come to hold with a group that really has helped Arlington, and that's the Arlington Business Partnership.
I want to ask more about economic opportunity, and as I ask about that, I want us to think about what's going on throughout the nation, in Ferguson, in New York City, in Baltimore. And Riverside has had, you know, it's many decades away, but, you know, there have been challenges as it relates to economic opportunity and police community relations. So here we are in a community that is, you know, fairly harmonious, but who knew Baltimore was a tinderbox? And so I want to actually start with you, Mike, if we can. You have been in law enforcement, not to say that you don't have an outstanding point, but I would like to start with you. Where do you see relations between the community and the police? And really talk about the economics of it. You know, we can focus on the racial side, but what we're learning, especially out of Baltimore, is it's not necessarily a racial issue, but the Baltimore Police Department, I believe, is majority-minority. And so talk to me about that.
You know, I think it's a lot of perception, you know, among any, any group, any racial group, any minority, majority, you know, there's, there's different stereotypical viewpoints that I think that people have. And I think that as long as we dialogue and we talk and we communicate, you know, and our cops talk at community meetings and they drop the cop talk and they look more human and sound more human, I think if they listen to the people like what, you know, Chris and I do, we're very receptive to our, to our constituents, you know? The people that live here, they're our boss, you know? And I told people at the doorstep, when I get elected, I don't work for City Hall, I work with them, but I represent their voice and I'm their advocate. Well, the same thing for law enforcement. I think a successful law enforcement agency, you know, they're going to have their trials and tribulations that'll come along. Something can happen in just an instant on a car stop, and it can change the dynamic just instantly of, you know, where everybody's thinking and draw those lines, those battle lines sadly. But I think having good dialogue beforehand and having people in place that would be a voice of reason, that would bring some calm or some stability, that have a trust and that dialogue is open all the time, I think that can head off a lot of things. So I think Riverside has learned some lessons from the past, and I think that if we can continue to, you know, build that trust and build that dialogue and invite people in to see that, look, this isn't a mystery here, how law enforcement's done, you know, look at the lineup that you saw on some of the, some of the Facebook pages of some of the citizens standing in front of the cops, defending them, not having any riot gear, but standing in front of the riot gear police, I saw some of those Facebook postings from Baltimore. That is the community stepping up and saying, no, we are going to stand in front of our cops as well as behind them.
Sir?
Yeah, and it all goes down to communication. What we've got to do is continue to earn that trust, and it's a daily earning of trust. Just because we may have had good relations in the past, you've got to earn that trust with the community every single day.
But what about the economic opportunity element? It seems like that's what the conversation has turned to. Of course, there are racial tensions, but a lot of it's economic tension.
Well, that's true, and I think Riverside, going back to the 60s, if you look, and I'm a product of integrated schools in the 60s, my fourth grade teacher, God bless her, is still alive, and I, and I look at her as a mentor, but she brought us in a very turbulent time in the 60s, and we came through it. And so I think a lot of us that are now in our 50s can look back and say, that was really a kind of a crucible back then, but we can learn from that. But again, it's continuing to earn that trust, but in having, reaching out to the community, one thing you mentioned, economic development and opportunity. I would say that our, we have a large minority ownership of businesses in Riverside. We reach out to our community, we're a very diverse community, and I think just that interaction, I think when you get in different cities, certainly on the East Coast, they become very parochial. Riverside does not have, which I believe, everybody has come here from another place. So we all have started out on a level playing field, which is not true in other parts of